Good evening, everyone. My name is Malley Rosado. I'm the council president for the city of Hartford. I am calling today to order this committee of the whole meeting, September 2nd, 2020. With us this evening is Councilman John Gill. And I'm going to read these names as I see them on the screen. Councilwoman Shirley surgeon, Councilwoman Marilyn Rosetti, Councilman Lake LeBron, Councilman Josh Mixtum, Councilwoman Wodolise Bermudas, Councilman James Sanchez, and Councilman Clark has asked me to excuse him from this meeting. Also on our screen is Alex Lombardi from Corporation Council. Hi. With that said, I believe also, yes, Mr. Noel McGregor, our town clerk, is also on our screen this evening. With that said, I am calling on the first item on our agenda tonight. That is an ordinance amending Article 5, Division 5, Section 2-196 of the Hartford Municipal Code. Introduce my Mayor Bronin, item number 13, on the 7/13/2020 agenda. And I believe that from the administration Corporation Council, we have Alex Lombardi presenting, correct?
Yes, Council President.
Alex, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Rosado and all the members of the Committee of the Whole for the opportunity to speak this evening regarding the mayor's proposed reforms to the city's civilian police review board. As you know, the proposed changes aim to strengthen the CPRB by increasing its resources and its authority. As the mayor stated, he welcomes a discussion of potential changes to his proposals to further strengthen the board. The mayor's proposed amendments would dedicate to the CPRB full-time investigative staff led by an inspector general. The CPRB investigations would, under the mayor's proposal, run concurrent with those done by the Hartford Police Department to expedite the process and allow the chief to consider the CPRB's findings in addition to those of Internal Affairs before making a decision regarding misconduct or any appropriate discipline. Wherever the CPRB and the chief of police disagree, a three-member panel, which is to include a neutral third party, would make an ultimate determination regarding misconduct. And this is significant, of course, because the CPRB's findings are currently only advisory in nature. Since I know all of you have reviewed the mayor's proposals in detail and heard comment from the public on the proposal already, rather than to take a lot of your time speaking to the specifics of the proposed amendments to the CPRB, I thought I would just take this opportunity to take any questions or discussion at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Lombardi. Councilman Mixtum, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Attorney Lombardi, a question, I'll have many, but I think this is maybe an easy one. A lot of, concerning that three-member panel that you just mentioned, a lot of constituents came to that with some confusion because it seems like what that does is, says when the chief has a disagreement with the board, there's a panel and the chief sits on the panel and it just seems weird. Now, I understand, I talked to the mayor about it, and I understand the effect of that to be, it's like an arbitration agreement. In other words, the chief and the head of the board go to a third person and they make their case to that third person, and that third person essentially decides that, so we could say that arbitrator. So I, and I, this is in what I, what was sent out to the folks on the council, I had proposed, in essence, changing the language to make that clearer. I mean, I know the effect is the same, but a lot of folks found that three-member panel, including the two people who disagree with each other, confusing. And so I wonder if there's any legal reason to set it up as a three-member panel, but two of them, we know what they think, and the third one is a tiebreaker versus just calling it an arbitration?
I don't know if I'm the only one having trouble with Councilman Mixtum's feed, but let me just repeat the question as I understood it. And then Councilman Mixtum, you tell me if I misunderstood the question you're just asking. Is there legal reason why it couldn't be set up as? Can everybody hear me, by the way?
You're a little coming and going.
Sorry, can everybody hear me now?
We can.
Okay. Sorry about that. I don't know if the difficulty is on my end, but if the question is whether there's a legal reason why it couldn't just be one person who technically makes the decision rather than a three-member panel with everyone having votes? The answer is no. There's no legal reason why that, the panel or the decision maker couldn't be constituted as a single neutral arbitrator. That happens in arbitrations from time to time as well. The idea is just that the two representatives that are aware of both sides of the case are there to present the facts as they understand them and their rationale for coming to their decision to the neutral so that the neutral can make an informed decision. How that practically plays out is usually that, you know, CPRB will still vote, yes, there was misconduct, if that's the way that it was, the chief would still vote if it was not, and then the. Though, of course, there's an opportunity for one side to sway the other and for there to be a unanimous decision when there's a three-person panel if, you know, one side has done a particularly good job of making its case. So, but to answer your more narrow question, there's no legal reason why it couldn't just be a single neutral arbitrator as the decision maker.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question. Can everybody?
Wodolise Bermudas?
Thank you. Can everyone see me okay this time?
Yes.
Okay, great. I was having technical problems in the last meeting. I'm not sure why. All right, so my question is having to do with the Office of Human Relations. So in this ordinance, the Office of Human Relations is brought up several times, and we understand and we recognize that, you know, the Civilian Police Review Board has been established for a long time, and the Office of Human Relations being like an office designated to assist in certain sections of the task at hand with CPRB has been longstanding. There have been many changes from administration to administration on, you know, the role, the function, who heads that office and whatnot. And so currently, I just wanted an update from the administration. Attorney Lombardi, if you could provide us an update on that Office of Human Relations?
So, the Office of Human Relations has, is now the Office of Equity and Opportunity. So that was before council fairly recently. That's a, that's now an office that has many of the same functions that Human Relations once had, but not all. And so actually, the proposed amendment that's before council with respect to the CPRB should have taken out all references to the Office of Human Relations. You know, so those, those references would be in brackets, and it should have been replaced with either the CPRB if the proposal would change that function to something within the purview of the CPRB, or the Office of Equity and Opportunity if it was something for that office.
Okay, so walk us through who heads that office, you know. I want to compare, because in the past, I know that this office, what used to be known as the Human Relations Office existed. It used to have its own department head. It used to have a staff of like between five to 10 employees. And if you can just clarify and walk us through where that office is housed and within which department? Does it have a director? How many employees? What does it normally do?
Sure. So because the Office of Equity and Opportunity is a fairly new creation or designation, I should say, that office isn't currently staffed, but it will be shortly, and I understand that there are efforts being undertaken to hire for that office presently. It is within the Office of the Chief Operating Officer. And I'm certainly happy to send you, Councilwoman Bermudas, or all members of the committee, the ordinance that sets forth all the specifics about the Office of Equity and Opportunity so that you can look at it. But I can tell you, it doesn't specify a certain number of employees. So that question won't be answered. That's really, I suppose, a budget question and one that, once that office gets started, gets rolling, a determination would have to be made. How many people do we need to carry out all of the responsibilities that are set forth in the ordinance?
Okay. And in the last four and a half years, it's my understanding that what was known as the Human Rela-, or the Human Relations Office has not been in existence, right? Is that correct?
There has been no director of the Office of Human Relations. There has been a staff person who is, would, at the, so the predecessor to the Office of Equity and Opportunity was the Office of Human Relations that had at one point been disbanded and then was reconstituted, I think, four, three and a half years ago. When it was reconstituted, the ordinance passed such that it reported up to the Director of Finance. So the staff person for the Office of Human Relations reported up to the Director of Finance. However, a Director of Relations was, was never established.
Okay, so it reported to the Director of Finance, and did it report also to Corp. Counsel's Office?
That staff person at one time reported to Corporation Counsel's Office, but again, once human, so win, just like, I guess, a brief history lesson, when Human Relations was disbanded many years ago, one of the staff people who had formerly worked for Human Relations was brought within Corporation Counsel's Office. This was before my first time with the city, so we're talking before 2011. Then, when the Office of Human Relations was reconstituted, that person was taken out of Corporation Counsel's Office, moved under the Finance Office, and now would be reporting to the Office of Equity and Opportunity.
Okay, thank you for that history and for that clarification. And I ask only because in the, in the ordinance, that office is mentioned several times, now to be called, as you've mentioned, Office of Equity and Opportunity, and it has everything, you know, it's mentioned in ways that, for instance, when a report is issued by, the sustained complaints and the reports are issued of the results of what happened with officers, the chief is supposed to get back to that office, the Office of Equity first, and then that office then provides the information to the Civilian Police Review Board. And so, you know, I can, I think it's, it's important, if we're going to reference that office, that it definitely be fully staffed and that it has the, the right amount of people to be able to carry out some of the functions that are already laid out in this ordinance.
Sure.
Councilman LeBron?
Yes. Thank you, Alex. So is there, in this resolution, is there any wordage or verbiage around communication to the public?
There are certain provisions that speak to an obligation to inform the community organization of the findings. There are provisions in here that talk about final determinations being public documents. I don't know if that answers your question or if you were looking for?
Yeah, I just, you know, just in general, what the communications plan is, I think one of the things that we've seen from folks in the community, and I've heard on numerous occasions, is, is the need for transparency. So if there are, you know, plans, or what is the current plan and, you know, as is, but it sounds like just conversations with local community-based organizations?
I think we lost Attorney Lombardi.
Everybody froze on me for a second. I hope I missed the question at the end. I'm so sorry. I don't know what the problem is.
So, the question was just around, you know, the communication plan. If I'm hearing you correctly, you said just reaching out to community-based organizations?
Well, that's all that's specifically referenced in the ordinance, because there are certainly, there are certain community-based organizations that take complaints or, you know, are involved in the process, and so there's just a specific provision in there to make sure that those organizations receive notice of the findings. But there, it's clear that any final documents that are issued are public documents, so they would be subject to release. You know, if you're looking for reports to council or anything of that nature, none of the amendments change what was already in the CPRB ordinances with respect to that.
Yeah, I just think, you know, just reports to council is one thing. I think we're privy to much more information, but I think the public wants to also be privy as well. So if I could just ask some, I see, I probably have other council members who want to ask, but I want to just ask all of them, because they're all related. I only have three total, I think. So in terms of the mayor being the sole individual hand-selecting the individuals for the CPRB, now is that something that's going to have to be changed under the charter, or can it be done here?
So the city charter makes clear that the mayor has the authority to appoint all members of boards and commissions, subject to confirmation by council. So that is in the charter, and the thing that directs the mayor that he has to select any, any individual or individuals would be a violation of that charter provision, but certainly anything that says that the mayor would accept recommendations or consult with anybody, as is in the amendment right now, that's not a violation of charter. And, you know, as long as the ordinance doesn't bind the mayor to select, limiting his authority to a group of people or individuals that are handpicked by someone else, really the check on his authority to put anyone on a board or commission under the charter is confirmation by this body.
Thank you. And so as a follow-up to that, since it looks like it would have to be changed by the charter, the, would the mayor be willing to, or does the mayor, again, this is my first time, while this happening, the selection criteria as to why someone was selected, or would that come in the form of the nomination and then, you know, the whereas or whatever, just in terms of why we're selecting said person?
I think under normal process, you know, again, it would just be his submission, here's why. I think he normally submits a resume. I believe you all typically would refer that for consideration, though, you know, as I said at the outset, I know the mayor is willing to engage in discussions to strengthen this, and so if there was a compromise, you know, that you wanted to discuss with the mayor about information that you wanted to know about someone who was selected or why they were selected, I'm sure he'd be open to that conversation. My only caveat would be that legally, under the charter, no piece of the ordinance can limit who he can select, and then obviously, it would come before you all to either confirm or not.
Thank you. And I promise my other council colleagues, is, under the current, is racial profiling added to item one, or is there any consideration of adding racial profiling to item number one?
Item number one.
Maybe I have the item incorrect. Hold on. But just racial profiling as one of the complaints?
The enumerated list of possible violations.
I understand the question. So I would say a couple of things. One, you know, the amendment is clear that there is, yes, there is enumerated categories of things that would be investigated, though it does say, related to but not limited to the following. So certainly, this is not an exhaustive list, and anything that concerns the CPRB, you know, that, that could be police misconduct could be added even under the current language. And, you know, there are things listed here, civil rights violations, violations of the code of conduct, which, you know, are broader categories that could encompass racial profiling.
So, so with that, as a follow-up of the, so would, could it be possible, or would it legally be possible to add like another category so that way we can like put things in, you know, in that? You know, there may be circumstances that we're not aware of at the moment, but across the country, you know, we're starting to see changes in regards to a lot of processes. Could there be a bigger other bucket legally?
Sure. There's no, there's no legal impediment that I see to adding, you know, something on the form. I guess you're thinking that says, hey, if it doesn't fall in this category, you're not precluded from filing a complaint. Here is a catch-all box, if you will, where you can explain in more detail what the allegation is that, that the officer did wrong. Yeah, as I sit here, I can't think of a legal reason why we couldn't add that, that additional box to the complaint form.
Yeah, because as is, as when community members are filling, first of all, the fact that they would fill out this form shows their resolve and their wantingness to, you know, put this process forward. Oftentimes, what's listed can be viewed as a barrier, and if, if said item was done to said person that is not listed, it makes it seem as if, you know, that's not, that can't be reviewed. And internally, in terms of the processing system, it allows, we know all policy operationalizes itself on the frontline workers, so it allows the person receiving the forms to be able to say, we, that's not a category, so we're not going to be able to take it. And so that has been some frustrations by our community members. By not having that, it makes, it makes it seem like the city is not concerned with said issue, rather be racial profiling, et cetera.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other questions? Councilman Mixtum?
I wanted, I wanted to follow up, actually, on what Councilman LeBron asked about the appointment power. Attorney Lombardi, you said that we, the ordinance can't constrain the mayor's choice in any way for charter, and I'm just not clear on that, because, for example, I mean, the ordinance does say people have to be residents. It limits, you know, that they can't be, I think, what is it, current police or former police? I mean, it puts some limits. It doesn't tell the mayor, pick so-and-so, but it says, you can't, you must pick from this class of people, you can't pick from that class of people. So I, along those lines, in terms of the legality under the charter, could the ordinance, for example, say at least one person appointed must be under a certain age, must be under 30? Would that, that, because he's still a wide world of people to choose from.
Sure. I guess the labor and employment lawyer in me is thinking to myself, oh, I hate, I hate age-based categories, but.
It could be anything. I just picked that as an example.
Sure, sure, sure. I, I would have to give it a little bit more thought, but I'm happy to, to look at, you know, anything that you want to put before our office as possibilities and just see, you know, is that, would that be stepping over the line of what the charter gives the mayor, which is broad authority to select, subject to this body's confirmation, you know, in light of the point you raised, which is, yes, you know, there are other ordinances that do say things like have to be a Hartford resident or, or, you know, kind of certain limiting categories, though it still gives a broad range of individuals. So your point is well-taken, and I guess I just want to give it a little bit more thought, and would be helpful if I had the specifics and, and can give a more specific opinion.
Let me, let me just add one more. I know you're not going to answer me now, but I just want to put it out there so that we're all thinking about it. What if it were, let us say, he had to choose from among a class of nominated people, but it was 100 people, you know, not, not like you pick from three, but you pick from many, many, so he's, again, still, and there would be some process for choosing those people. So don't answer now, because I know you don't want to answer now, but I'm just throwing that out.
Okay.
Follow-up question to that question about the mayoral appointment process. So based on, you know, we've gotten a lot, the entire council body has received a lot of feedback from the community, and one of them was, would it be possible to, since the mayor wants to have community input as part of his nomination process, and obviously, it's in the charter that he ends up, so, you know, the mayor can select who he wants to point to, to boards and commissions, but would it be possible, as part of that nomination process, for the mayor to submit to council and make public the rubric that was utilized to select those nominees? In the same way, for instance, that we receive the selected individuals' resumes, also attach the rubric. So for instance, you know, when we go through the Community Development Block Grants, the CDBG Block Grants, we receive from the Grants Office information, very detailed information of why, how these nonprofits were selected to receive this funds, except we're changing it to, in this case, it would be a rubric for the appointments that the mayor made, based on the recommendations that the community organizations and the community in general had.
My opinion is that there's not authority, the council wouldn't have authority, or the ordinance could not mandate that the mayor create a rubric. I don't know what his process is for selecting individuals for, for boards and commissions, but, you know, to the extent that he has some kind of formal rubric. I'm, I'm just kind of thinking about what's a public document. If he makes these notes to himself on some kind of a, you know, chart or form, then, you know, that wouldn't be subject to public disclosure. But I guess my point, the broader point is, I don't know that the mayor uses a formal rubric, and there wouldn't be authority to mandate that he does, though if, if he did, you all can certainly request it. And, you know, he does provide information to the council about the nominee, and if you're interested in receiving information on why a nominee is particularly suited to the board or why that person was selected, so that it can help you all determine whether to confirm that appointment or not, you know, I think you can certainly ask that question and, and get that information.
Are there any other questions or discussions? Councilman Mixtum?
Thank you, Madam President. Just in the, going to the, the part of the ordinance that talks about the selection committee for the third panel member?
Right.
That committee includes a number of folks. Among them, the police union presidents. Is there any legal reason that the police union president, you know, charter or otherwise needs to be there, or is that just a question of the mayor's policy judgment in terms of why that's in it?
I think that the reason the police union president was probably included on that list is because we now have a third party who will be determining whether someone in the police union engaged in misconduct or not, whereas that used to be within the purview of the police chief alone, again, because CPRB was advisory only. And so because it is police union members that will be subject to any discipline, should there be a finding of misconduct by that neutral, the union would have an interest in being part of that selection committee, again, because it's their members who would be subject to the decisions of, of that individual.
But to be, to be clear, to follow up on that, the, whatever grievance process comes is in the union's contract, that still exists outside of this, in other, right? In other words, whatever comes out of this, let's say the chief says, I don't think he did anything wrong, this officer, I don't want to give him any punishment, and the board says, we think he should be fired, then the third party sides with the board. That still has to go through the whole grievance process, right? It's not like that's jumped over. They're still there protecting their members. They're still there protecting their members at that point, right?
That's true. Just like to clarify one thing, though. What the CPRB is finding or what the police chief, what internal affairs is finding and what the CPRB is finding is whether or not there was misconduct on the part of the officer, not a determination of what discipline is appropriate. The disciplinary range for any given charge of misconduct is set forth in the Hartford Police Department Code of Conduct. And it usually gives a range depending on the violation, how many times a given officer has violated that particular. So I just wanted to say that because the CPRB wouldn't be saying this person should be fired. It's this person engaged in misconduct and violated this provision of the code of conduct.
Got you.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
They would, whatever, if, if the CPR, if the ultimate decision is that the third party person overrules the chief and says, yes, there was misconduct of this kind.
Yep.
And then the contract says that kind of misconduct leads to this punishment.
Right.
The police union still has a mechanism outside of all of this to fight that and overturn it potentially, right?
That is correct. That is correct. And the city would defend it as it does any grievance. And, you know, that third party and or CPRB chair, whomever may be called by the city, you know, as, as part of that defense.
Add a follow up question to that. So when you were saying that the disciplinary range is charted in the code of conduct, we've been looking at other models. For instance, in New York, New Jersey, their civilian police review board is able to, through their ordinance, provide a matrix, a rubric to do exactly that, to say, okay, if an officer does this and is found, has sustained complaints on this particular item, then this will be the follow up in terms of what will happen of, in terms of a reprimand. And so, so it could be possible, then, if we're looking at other models, it would, it would be possible, wouldn't it, for us to also include that here? Or are you saying because of the way that the code of conduct is already established, we can't, we can't do that?
I guess I'm saying that because of the way the code of conduct is established, we, we already have that. You know, we have a document that says if you violate this provision, then here is the possible discipline. So I'm not sure, you know, without seeing what other models you're looking at. I guess what I hear you describe is very similar to what we already have.
Except in that example, it's their civilian police review board who provides the matrix.
They created, they.
Correct. They created the matrix.
I'm sorry to interrupt. It's the, it's the delay. But as I understand it, you'd want the CPRB to create essentially its own code of conduct to replace that, that exists at HPD.
Yeah. So is that possible? Correct. That's the question. Can that?
I would have legal concerns with that if it were to be challenged. You know, I'm, I'm not sure how we would fare in a defense. We would have certain arguments for, you know, under our management right, whether we could do something like that. I'm not, I'm not convinced that it's level of success. I'm happy to have offline, this is a public meeting. I'm happy to have offline conversations about my legal opinions with respect to that. But, you know, I'll just say for purposes of this meeting, I, I wouldn't advise that we go in that route.
So is the code of conduct, of conduct drafted by Corporation Counsel's Office or hu- or the Office of Human Resources, or is it specifically the chief's prerogative?
The, the Hartford Police Department Code of Conduct is a document that was established. And I, I couldn't tell you who first drafted it. It has been amended over the years. It is certainly, in my opinion, a management right to establish what is misconduct in the police department. That's not something that, in my opinion, we have to bargain with the union. So it has been amended over the years. But I, I couldn't tell you who first drafted it. And it's not something that's periodically reviewed by HR or court counsel to, for wholesale amendment or redrafting.
Sure, other colleagues have an opportunity to ask questions, so.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Couple, couple of questions, if I may. The most recent budget allotted a certain amount of money to the civilian review board. Do you know how that, how, what the expectation is for how that money is to be spent?
I do not, Councilman Gill, but I'm happy to see if I can get further detail on that line item. Share it with you.
Second question, the, the existing proposal refers to community based agencies. And I, the lawyer in me has problems with these things, not knowing what the definition is or if there's a legal definition of a community based agency. I think we're always concerned, or I'm concerned as a lawyer, and I know the courts are always concerned about things that are vague and, and the courts love to void things if they're, if they're too vague. And I, I just don't know, do, do, when we reference that or when the drafters reference that, are they looking at some model for what is, is there some state definition for what a community based agency is or something that we can refer to?
So, Councilman Gill, the, the references to community based agencies were not added. They were already in our CPRB draft ordinance. Some have been taken out in sections that we have bracketed to delete. And shall cause notice to be given to this. I'm, I'm just looking quickly at the references that may still remain to, to try and help me answer your question.
Well, what, I, I can maybe help you out under jurisdiction. Complaints may be filed with the Office of Human Relations, the Civilian Police Review Board, or with the Police Department, or with community based agencies.
Right, right. I'll tell you, and, and this is just from memory, back when that staff member was with Corporation Counsel's Office, that there were several community based agencies that were provided with copies of the complaint form because they were places where citizens would often go to, to complain about the treatment that they received by a police officer. And so we, we, this was an effort, I think, by the city in the past to get that form out into the community so that if people didn't want to come to City Hall, there were other ways that they could see that there was a complaint process. But you're right, I don't see the community based agencies being defined. I think the idea here was just because there had been a practice of giving those forms to certain agencies that we didn't necessarily want to change that under the amendment. But we can certainly add a definition of which agencies receive copies of the form or would be charged with, with forwarding it to the city. You know, or rethink that piece altogether and see if we want to continue to put those forms out to third parties.
All right, thank you. President, I, I don't know if, if it would be appropriate. I, I, I know all of us received multiple emails from many different groups with a lot of suggestions for changing this ordinance. And it seems to me it's a, it's an awful lot to try to digest at, at, at this meeting. And, and I'm also, I'm hearing Corporation Counsel say on more than one occasion that there are legal issues that she would have to go back and think about and, and come back to. So it sounds to me like this is not anything that we're going to be moving on tonight and is going to require a lot more thought. And I'm just wondering if it would be appropriate to maybe get it out of cow at this point, send it back to council. And then we can have further discussions to try to hone this. And if, if that's appropriate, I'll make a motion at this point to send this particular matter back to council with no recommendation, but just, just to get it out of the cow at this point.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Councilman Mixtem?
Just, just a question to Councilman Gill. Are you saying that if we did this, what you've moved to do, we would stop talking about it right now? Because my, my inclination is, is to support doing further work. But we do have Attorney Lombardi here. We're all here. I feel like we might take advantage of us all being here to discuss a little more. I just want to understand what your vision is.
I, I certainly wouldn't stand in the way of further discussion, as with any motion. When a motion's made and seconded, there's time for discussion. So that's, that's not my intent, but my, but I, my intent is to say at some point, let's, let's just get it out of cow. After we, after everybody's had an opportunity to take advantage of Attorney Lombardi or i- i- it make any other, any other positions anybody wants to take or questions anybody wants to raise.
If we move it out of cow, then what would the next step be? What, are we going to refer it to a city council committee, regular committee meeting so that we can discuss it further?
That would be correct. That would be correct. Obviously, this is an ordinance, and so changes will be made. And, you know, we will have to go through the same process again, public hearings, community involvement. So we'd rather send it back to council with no recommendation and then perhaps send it back to committee.
For, for attorney, for Attorney Lombardi.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. So would we want to take a vote?
Yes.
I, I mean, it's my, I'm okay letting, I'm okay with a few more questions. I mean, I, I think if everybody's here, it's not inappropriate to get a little.
I understand, but a motion's been made and it has been seconded. And we can take all the other further discussions. We still have to, the working party has compiled all of their opinions, concerns, recommendations. The Dems will be doing that. The Hartford Party will be doing that. We want to draft a memo that has everyone's input, talk to the administration. And this is the, one of the many conversations that we are going to have moving forward before, before this ordinance passes. Councilman Mixtem?
Thank you. I guess by way of just a, I do want to take advantage of us all being here. I don't want to hold up the motion forever, but just a question. Can I, can I just ask another question of Attorney Lombardi before we go forward? So we don't close the matter?
Well, that, that's what we want to do. We have a motion in place second. I mean, we could take a vote to move back with recommendation or we can take a vote to continue to have discussion. The reason why I want to move it back and, and kind of stop the conversation that we're having right now is because, you know, this is probably all going to change or we're going to have even more questions.
Could we send it with a recommendation to send it to public safety or do we just send it?
We are sending it back. And once this goes on the agenda at the council meeting, then we will make that recommendation to send it to a committee. This is a committee of the whole, like any other meeting, except we have all council members here. We can't pass this ordinance, it has to go back to council. Once it goes back to council, we will have to send it back to a committee. Can't just pass this ordinance at the next council meeting.
Very. I was just trying to understand, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion that's in place, probably second. Are those in favor of moving this back to council with no recommendation, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Thank you. This motion to send back this ordinance to council passes. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance amending chapter two, Article 18, section two dash eight six oh, motor vehicle policy of the Hartford Municipal Code, introduced by Councilman Mixtem. It was item number 14 on the 7/13/2020 agenda. Councilman Mixtem, you have the floor, since this is your ordinance.
Thank you much, Madam President. So this, what this ordinance does is mostly not, it makes some substantive changes to the rules about who has a car of department heads and how they can use it. We already have an ordinance on the books. That's the one that's proposed to be changed. But, and we also have a couple of policies that have been put in place by different mayors, including the current mayor, about what is the extent to which the police chief, the fire chief and the mayor can use their city cars, right? So they're 24 seven cars, so they can take them home. But there are limitations already through the mayor's policy about taking them places that are neither home nor work nor a quick stop between home and work. That's the thing. The trouble is that it's not an ordinance and it, we don't have any, we don't have any mechanism to enforce it. And this came up in the context of Police Chief Dodi's car accident in the sense that there was already a policy in place that said you can only use the car between work and home and short stops on the way. But he was not doing that. He was outside of that policy. And then there was also a policy about how accidents were to be reported. And he did not follow that policy. And we, and we, I don't want to like dig into Chief Dodi here. I'm not trying to bring that up again. I'm just saying it raises an issue, which is that we don't, we as council, as a city, don't have a lot of control and oversight over the use of these cars. So what this ordinance does is it makes it clear. You can only use it between home and work and stops in between. That's how it was. If you're going to take it more than 50 miles out of the city, you have to get the mayor or COO's prior permission and you have to notify the council. The council doesn't get to say yea or nay, but the council knows. So we're just creating transparency there. And because we already had an ordinance that said all the, these cars have to have the positioning system so we can know where they are. And then what came up after Dodi's accident is that in fact, we're just not following that order. Now, I know that COO Montanez, she's told me that that's, the city's working on getting us up to speed on that. But what my proposal does is says, if the car doesn't have a GPS, you can't give it to a department head. Basically, we're saying we want there to be transparency and accountability with the use of city cars. And then the, the teeth is if a department head violates these rules and a majority of city council finds that they violated the rules, they lose the car for a year, right? The goal is not to take away the car. The goal is for them not to break the rules. And if that seems harsh, I mean, one, I'm open to some negotiation if you all think this could pass with something else, of course. But I would say, if that seems harsh, remember that our department heads are well paid and they're grownups and they all have cars or they can get cars with their salaries. So the, the worst consequence is that instead of driving your, you know, lovely SUV, you just drive whatever you drive. Well, that to me seems like not such a terrible sanction for what is essentially perk. Anyway, so I put it out to all of you if you have questions or ideas about this.
Councilman LeBron?
So, Councilman Mixtem, as I'm reading this, is all of the, all of the proposed changes, is that the stuff that is underlined in the document you have sent over?
Hold on, I'm, I'm.
I'm trying to discern like what you added and what you have, like what was already currently there. And I'm having a difficult time differentiating what is current policy versus what is your proposed policy.
The, the underlined stuff is the stuff I've added.
Thank you. So in, in your opinion, the current construct of the motor vehicle policy is too broad. And so you want to, I, I guess the position is, is that, you know, the company vehicles are a perk. And so therefore you want to narrow, or for lack of a better word, narrow the policy to allow it just for back and forth from home to work and none in between. Like, so if somebody stops to get a Subway sandwich, they'll be in violation. Right? So that's what I'm saying, that my fear is that we're, we're getting too narrow with it. And maybe it's a combination of, you know, we, we, we can negotiate and talk about it, but it just seems that it's very constricting to department heads who need to be very fluid.
Right. Can I respond to that, Madam President?
Yes, you may. Yes, you may.
So, Councilman LeBron, the, it's a little confusing, because this is, goes on an ordinance, and then there's also some mayoral policies that make other additions. I think the intention here is, like, to address your Subway sandwich example, which is a perfect one. The idea, and this comes from Mayor Bronin's own policy, is they should be able to use it from home to work, and also for the sort of ordinary home-to-work stops. In other words, get a sandwich, you know, go by a store, things that are right there. And the issue is when, at least as I see it, the thing we want to stop is when they're doing things that are strictly personal and outside of the city. And here again, like the police chief's example, this one, he was down to Essex for, you know, working on his boat, and then it had him to go to his, he supposedly doesn't live in. And those are things that are outside the city, and they're not work-related. And those are the things that I think we should be reining in.
Councilman Gale.
Yeah, thank you. I, a little bit of pushback for you, Councilman Mixtum. It strikes me that both the police chief and the fire chief have vehicles that aren't just vehicles. They're rolling technology offices. I can't actually say I've been in the police chief's car or the fire chief's car, but I just have a sense, and I'm sure somebody else can correct me here if I'm way off base, but I have a sense, they got a lot of technology in those cars. They got computers. They got all kinds of stuff. And I also have a sense that all those people are more or less on 24 hours duty almost all the time. Not 100%, but I think they're on call just about all the time. So I kind of think, even if he's at his boat, you really do want the chief of police to have his vehicle with all that equipment if something comes up where he really needs to get his butt back to Hartford, so that he can be utilizing that. So just, you know, a little pushback on that, on that part of it with respect to those two individuals. Now, outside of that, I don't know who else would have, you know, sort of a, you know, an equipped car. But where you have a car that's got special equipment in it designed for that particular job, maybe we need to rethink this a little bit.
Councilman Sanchez, and then followed by Councilwoman Rosetti.
Thank you, Councilman Gale, for that comment. So having a vehicle is actually, is not a perk for both HPD and HFD chiefs. It's a requirement. They have to respond to any emergencies, especially if it's added a magnet to that, you know, they have to have several, either the SWAT team or a tactical unit to report to a fire or mass shooting or what have you. So these chiefs are required to have these vehicles. They should be required to have them 24/7, in the case of major emergencies. Now, to your point, Councilman Mixtum, you know, I do agree that if you're going out to, let's say, East Hampton or wherever, and you know you're going to take the day off and leave someone, for example, Assistant Chief Medina in charge for the weekend, then sign out the vehicle or leave the vehicle, take your own personal vehicle. So maybe some kind of a language to that effect will work for me. But the language that we're trying to, or, you know, what you have written to impose on the chief and putting these GPS, I just feel that this is is too much. It's too much. It's almost as if, you know, we're going to hire you as a chief, but yet we don't trust you as a chief. So let's just do this and have total control on your, you know, on your movements. I can't agree with that. If we hire these gentlemen and other leadership to be assistant chief, chiefs, or what have you, deputy chief, I think is to be done in a way where we trust their integrity. And if we can't, then what are we looking at? We're going to scrutinize every single individual that decides, well, I want to be, you know, the next one in charge, or even a police officer. I mean, that's, you know.
Yes.
On the chief, for chiefs, for leadership like that, that's too much control. I mean, if we're going to follow that, we might as well put a GPS on the mayor's car too, whether it's personal or not. So I mean.
That's already the law. We're already supposed to have GPS on all of these. We haven't been doing it, but it's already an ordinance.
It's not, I don't think it's an ordinance for the GPS on the vehicles. I think it's a contract agreement with the union.
It is already an ordinance.
All right. Well, I just can't support the language right now, so, but I can't support some new language.
Councilwoman Rosetti.
Thank you, Council President. So, you know, certainly, I think we're trying to strengthen something, and, you know, we try not to reference an incident. And I always say, if you're going to strengthen something, don't bring it back to something. Try to make it better for what it is, and not, you know, call out something in particular. So I think we should be mindful of that. I want, one thing I want to point to is, I don't think anything should come back to council. None of those people who have cars work for council. They work for the COO. So that is not, you know, that point that you made, that we need to be made aware of, that kind of thing. Personally, I don't feel, our, we set policy in the city of Hartford. We don't, you know, have to know when someone's car. I think if you're trying to achieve a goal of some type of uniformity, you know, some type of system in place, you know, and I truly believe in that, because in the 20 years from the last time I was on, and I always bring that up, but, you know, cars have become an issue. They are things that are harder to control. Certainly, department heads and people who are in positions of authority, like fire and police, I do believe are in different kind of situations. But if you're really trying to set some type of change that shows there's better control, that's really what we're talking about. And that's the kind of thing I would support.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rosetti. Councilman Mixtum.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to, I want to respond, because I think some of these are some good suggestions that I think could, you know, I could make changes. First, to Councilman Gale's point, and actually, I think this also addresses Councilman Sanchez's point. It seems like, in some sense, what some of this pushback is around is around the sanction I had proposed of loss of the car for a year. And I hear both of my colleagues saying, like, Fire Chief and the Police Chief, they need these particular cars. And whatever sanction we might give them, let us not take away the cars, because they still have to do their job, and that's integral to it. So I want to say, like, I hear that, and it seems like that is maybe somewhere where we could, where there's room for compromise. Like, if maybe the issue is that it's not, you know, they don't lose the car for a year and then have to drive their own car all the time, but instead, they got to reprimand or whatever other thing that we could all talk about. I knew, I did want to push back a little on Councilman Sanchez on one point, which is that, yes, we hope that everyone we hire, everyone the city hires, that the mayor nominates and that this body approves, brings a high level of integrity to the job. Like, we would love a world where we don't, we have no doubt that every one of our department heads and every employee of the city is very above board, right? But I think we also have a duty as the makers of policy to create a system that holds everyone to account. I mean, it's, trust is nice, but trust but verify is better. And that's really what I'm proposing. As I mentioned, the ordinance already says the cars are supposed to have GPS. And to address Councilwoman Rosetti's point on this, I think the reason that I have suggested having the information come back to council is not because we should be involved in the day-to-day management of city employees. I agree. That's not our job. Practically speaking, it is our job to be a check on the mayor in some sense, right? Not this mayor in particular, but in general, right? The council is the legislative body. The mayor is the executive. And we're supposed to balance it out, so that the mayor does not have unchecked power to do anything. Because, like I say, not because this mayor is, lacks integrity, but because who knows what may come in the future, right? We're trying to build for a strong city for a long time. So in that sense, when council knows, it's a channel for the public to know, the channel to raise awareness and to put pressure on the mayor if folks think the mayor is doing something wrong. Now, you know, if folks don't think so, then nothing's going to come of it. But by having more transparency, by putting the information in a place where the people can get it, where it can get spread out, we hold the mayor and his employees to account. So that's what I would say in defense of that. It's not that we're trying to do day-to-day management. It's that we're trying to create transparency.
Councilman LeBron.
May I just respond, please?
Councilman Sanchez.
Yeah, so Josh, I just want you to understand, I'm sorry, Councilman Mixtum. Just want you to understand, about three and a half years ago, four years ago, my second year of the last term, I was pushing hard for GPS. And for some reason, at that point, at that moment, there was nothing in the charter or anything that stated that they're required to have it. So if you don't mind, can you send me a copy, mail that to me? Because I would like to push for GPS on all the vehicles, including DPW, the city vehicles. We should know where they're located and keep a track of what's going on and the hours that's being used.
I will send it out to all of council.
Councilman LeBron.
Yes, through you, Madam President. So, Councilman Mixtum, I love the Ronald Reagan quote. I absolutely agree with that. Trust but verify, I believe that's Ronald Reagan. If I'm wrong, somebody fact-check me. But similar to item number two on the agenda, I also would like to make a motion to move this back with no recommendation, because it's obvious, well, not obvious, maybe, I shouldn't be so strongly opinionated with that, but it seems to me that there needs to, that this needs to be a moving document. And so as a result, I want to also create the processes. I think the spirit is there, but we need to fine-tune it. So I'd like to make a motion to send it back with no recommendation.
I second that.
So we have a motion that's been made, and properly seconded. Are there any discussions? Councilwoman Bermudez.
Yep. Not every council member was able to provide feedback during our discussion prior to that motion being made, and I was one of them. So.
I apologize. I didn't see your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I know a motion has been made, but I do want to add as part of the conversation. And so in reference to this ordinance, I think, obviously, it's very timely. We've received, as council, we've received a lot of public input on this, everything that transpired in the chief using the vehicle and what happened with the vehicle, with the city vehicle. And so I do agree with all the statements and everything that Councilman Mixtum has stated of why this ordinance, why he's submitting this ordinance, and I fully support this effort. And it's not just something that's happening right now when we're talking about the use of city vehicles. If we look at previous administrations, the use of city vehicles and in the worst-case scenario of what could happen when they're in use by department heads or assistant department heads, and then there are accidents that are involved, the city has incurred different lawsuits. You know, we can look back at the deputy Department of Public Works. Their assistant, who was a deputy under the Mayor Segarra's administration, where the city incurred a very hefty lawsuit when that director, that assistant director struck someone while driving while intoxicated. And we could look back at other examples as well, and one of them being an assistant chief under a different administration. And so it's something, it's an issue that's not just very timely, but it's also critical when we're talking about the very well-being of our city, of our financial responsibility, and also those who drive the road and share the road with us.
Any other discussions?
Yes, I just want, I made the motion. I want to apologize to Councilwoman Bermudez. I didn't realize that you didn't make a comment that was not intentional. Everyone should have an opportunity.
Neither did I. Neither did I.
So I just want to just formally apologize to you. That was not the intent.
Thank you, Councilman LeBron. Councilman Mixtum.
Councilman LeBron, it was an old Russian proverb that Reagan famously recited to a KGB director.
Thank you.
So, you know, what I'm going to have, what I'm going to say about this ordinance is that I do share some of the sentiments that, you know, both you and Councilwoman Bermudez have stated during our discussion here. But I have to say that we are going to have to have further conversation when it comes to the emergency vehicles used by the chief of fire and chief of police. These are vehicles that are highly equipped with technology. And, you know, there have been various horrific situations throughout our nation. And, you know, Hartford is not exempt from them. And I would hate that we put something in place where we have a chief that's somewhere and needs to get to a scene, whether it's an emergency, an accident, what have you, and they would have to drive home and get into a personal vehicle and be stuck in traffic and put lives at stake. So that is something that we really need to look at and have further conversation. So with that said, a motion has been made, and properly seconded. All those in favor with sending this ordinance back to council with no recommendation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, no? For the record? Thank you. So this ordinance will be sent back to council with no recommendation. Next on our agenda is an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Appointment of Department Head Requirements, Section 850, Residency Requirement of the Municipal Code, absurd by Mayor Bronin, item 11, on the 6/22/2020 agenda. And I believe the administration, we have our chief operating officer, Ms. Thea Montanas. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Rosado. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you. Good evening, Council President Rosado and members of city council. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss Mayor Bronin's proposed changes to the city ordinance that relates to the residency requirement. The intent of the proposed changes is to devise, but not require, a residency for city department heads, with the exception of chief operating officer, corporation council, the fire chief, the superintendent. Those four positions would still be required to establish residency in the city. The purpose of the residency requirement is to ensure that city leaders are committed and invested in our community, and we all share that same intent and desire. However, as an administration, we've seen that there can be unintended consequences to the residency requirement as currently constituted. Some candidates who have deep ties to Hartford, many of which I personally know that were born and raised graduates of our school system, but who have chosen to reside in the surrounding communities many times because of family obligations, are effectively dismissed from contention for leadership roles because it is not practical for them to sell their homes and move their families just a few miles away. Another factor is that the jobs that the residency requirement applies to have the least job security in the entire city, as they are mayoral appointees. That means that individuals who do not already live in the city have to, in many cases, sell their homes, relocate their families for a job that may not exist beyond a maximum of five, four years, excuse me. So at this time, I welcome any questions you may have with regard to Mayor Bronin's proposed changes.
Councilman Mixtum.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Montanias, what, we're talking just about department heads here, right?
That was the intent of Mayor Bronin's proposed changes. Yep.
What is the lowest salary of any department head? If you don't know exactly, you know, ballpark.
Sure. I would say the lowest could be $135,000 to $140,000 would probably be the minimum.
Thanks.
Sure.
Are there any other questions? Councilwoman Bermudez?
Thank you for your time. What's the highest?
The highest currently, I believe, would be myself as the chief operating officer at $175,000 per year.
Councilman Gil. I'll go by Councilman LeBron.
Thank you, Madam President.
And I, you know, it's interesting, having run for office in the city more than once, and campaigning, I have found, and just having been supporting people who've run for office in the city over the last 40 years, I have often found myself advocating very strongly for a residency requirement, and, you know, being very passionate about it. You know, it's amazing how, once you get under the hood, sometimes your point of view can be modified. And I must say that I'm not insensitive to the thrust of this ordinance, because I can see some of the problems that we've had. And to Chief Operating Officer's point, these are the least stable positions in the city of Hartford. And to think that the city just happens to have a finance director floating around, who isn't doing, you know, who's 45 years old and isn't doing anything, and is willing to take this job at $140,000 a year even, with the risk that two years later, they're out and looking for another comparable job, some of that isn't reality-based. This, there may not be some of those types of jobs really that readily available. It is also interesting, though, that, and COO, you can correct me on this, I believe that our police chief is guaranteed four years once appointed. And it may be that there's, I don't know if our fire chief is similarly given a four-year term, he might be. So it may be that there's some interplay here, where if we're looking to make sure everybody's a resident of Hartford, we also are saying, once you're appointed, you've got a four-year term, so that you're not unwilling then to move into Hartford if you don't presently live here, or if you live here, you know, that's a long enough period of time that you can adjust. So I haven't really, you know, thought out a particular amendment to this, but I would just throw that out there for some consideration by all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So, no problem. So for you, Ms. Montanaz, I have a couple of questions. Does this residency requirement also pertain to the superintendent of schools? Yeah, I'm new.
I'm sorry, that was my fault, I muted you, Ms. Montanaz.
I'm gonna, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect, okay, I apologize. The superintendent of schools reports directly to the Board of Education, and so I don't, her position is not one of those positions that this residency requirement applies to.
No, but meaning, in the Board of Ed, does anyone know, I'll open it up to the floor, does anyone know if the Board of Ed policy pertains to this residency requirement extends to the Board of Ed and the superintendent in particular?
I believe they have their own policy, and it is that you have to be a resident.
Yes.
Thank you. And then, Ms. Montanaz, just for the record, given that the superintendent is also a city employee, you know, I understand the governance by the state and all that stuff, that would, I think she, or the superintendent position would be the highest-paid position in the city, right?
Yes, if you were to include the Hartford Public Schools, I believe that position, yes, yep.
And just for the record, for the audience, because I have somebody asking me a question now from the community, what is said salary?
I believe is at least $240,000, I believe. But I would want to circle back to confirm that, I don't want to share inaccurate information.
Of course not, and I won't hold you to it. So, thank you. So, in terms of the residency requirement itself, can you kind of walk us through the efforts that are made to recruit within Hartford? Or what, are we ensuring that we're having exhausted efforts being made? Like, what are the processes? So, for example, right, do we just post it on Indeed.com and say, okay, just come in? Or, I mean, yeah, so if you could just walk us through the processes in terms of trying to find department heads, I'm new, so, you know, I'm trying to learn.
Sure, no, absolutely, I appreciate that question. That's actually a question we receive quite often with director-level positions. There are multiple ways in which we try to identify candidates that are Hartford residents. Oftentimes, there are names that are provided to the mayor by various community stakeholders, especially residents, who may be aware that there is a job opportunity that might be available, and there might be somebody who's a good fit. So oftentimes, there are recommendations that are made by the community. Oftentimes, you know, through Mayor Bronin and his own conversations and his own networks, he is constantly interested in trying to bring the best talent to Hartford that is going to serve the community. And so, he often will, you know, himself pursue potential candidates. He also, you know, will ask department heads themselves if they know of people within their own networks. Oftentimes, you know, we try to also ask, you know, folks for assistance. Recently, we've engaged an executive search firm to assist us specifically with the position of our chief financial officer. You know, that is a very technical position, you know, it would benefit us to have a CFO with experience in municipal finance, you know, and speaking with those persons across the state, and speaking with other communities that are also seeking, you know, persons with that specific skill set. It's been extremely challenging. You know, there are a large number of folks in that space that are retiring, and so there's not necessarily this pipeline or that next generation of government finance or government budget candidates, there's not a large pool of them. So, you know, in a situation like that, we've engaged a search firm to help us try to identify somebody.
Councilman LeBron?
Has there ever been consideration, you know, similarly, you know, I know of a young person who just graduated college two years ago, and was, you know, offered to come to Hartford, Connecticut with, oh man, I forgot the name of the organization, nonetheless, it's a downtown organization, and they provided moving fees to, you know, defer the cost for this young person to be able to move into the city for moving, and, you know, security deposit, so forth, and so on. So let me just lump both questions together. So, you know, that might be a big obstacle for some, although they're going to be making a big salary, nonetheless, some kind of incentive in that way. And then the second piece is, I understand the school piece, right? Like, if I have, you know, my children, my babies, who are not babies, they're adults, happy birthday Savannah, it's her birthday today, you know, shout out to her. But nonetheless, if they were at an age where they would be affected by school, have we explored the possibility of lottery influence? There are a lot of line items where, like, for example, Naylor School, you have to live in the neighborhood, or, you know, maybe, you know, that might affect where if you move across the street from this school, it'll heavily play into the lottery system. I know we have two lotteries here in Connecticut, one is the regional school choice one, but we also have the HPS lottery, where we determine what that is for our local schools, and so that can heavily influence. So has either of those two items been explored as part of the efforts to try to get someone to come live in our city?
Sure. You know, unfortunately, due to our financial constraints, we just have not been in a financial position where we're able to pay for relocation costs. And so, it's just been something, you know, that we've told folks that if this is a position that you are really interested in pursuing, the city does not have the financial resources to also pay for your relocation. So unfortunately, you know, I still don't think we're in a position to do that. And so, again, that's challenging to deal with. The second with regard to school choice, I don't know what legal ability we have to try to give priority status to potential directors with children that are entering, interested in entering one of the systems, I don't think legally we can do that. You know, I will say to you, Councilman LeBron, you know, a lot of the folks that I've spoken to over the past five years with family obligations, it has been a lot of people, actually, that are the caregivers to their aging parents. And so, I think oftentimes, we assume that it's because of children, right, who perhaps, you know, the decision has been made that maybe they have specific needs, and therefore it's not a good fit within the school system that we have. But more often than not, I hear from folks that are taking care of their parents. And, you know, one person that comes to mind, who publicly shared how challenging the residency requirement is, was the former director of Public Works, Marilyn Cruz Aponte. She talked very openly about the fact that she was responsible for her mother's well-being, and her mother did not reside in Hartford, and it was really hard for her to care for her mother, but also to establish the residence, residency in the city of Hartford, the city that she loved and was committed to, and we were proud to promote her in that position. She was one of the few Latinas, I think, in the country to be a director of Public Works. But she's, again, she was very candid about how difficult it was for her to serve the city that she loves and remain, you know, committed to her family obligations.
So, Madam President, just one, this is a quick one, just real quick. The, in terms of the cities across the state, are we, are there other cities with residency requirements, or are we the only one?
I believe we are an anomaly, we are very unique, in the sense that if you look at cities across the state, actually, and I want to share this information, and I want to make sure I give you the correct information, because I wanted to confirm that very point. Danbury and Manchester have requirements for police chiefs, oftentimes, in other communities across the state, there are residency requirements, but they do not apply to all city department heads. They're oftentimes just specifically focused on public safety positions like police and fire. There's an old State Office of Legislative Research report that paints Hartford as an outlier for residency. Bridgeport has a residency requirement for all officers of the city elected or appointed, but it is rarely enforced, and that was according to the Connecticut Post, because of confusion about what define, you know, how you define officers. And The Current at one point reported that Hartford is one of the few municipalities in Connecticut with a strict residency requirement. New Haven limits its rules to department heads, and New London requires certain workers, again, in New London's case, the fire, the finance chief and the legal director to live in the city. But other urban communities, including Bridgeport and Waterbury, have no such directives.
Councilwoman Bermudez?
Thank you. Through you, Council President. So, just again, to clarify, and I know it was brought up early, early on, but this is specifically residency requirement for COO, fire chief, HPD, and corp counsel based on this ordinance.
So those four positions, Councilwoman, would still be required to reside in the city of Hartford. So the charter actually requires that corporation council reside in the city of Hartford, and then, given the nature of the work that the COO and fire chief and police chief do, you know, Mayor Bronin felt that they should be required to always reside in the city. So they, that residency requirement would still apply to them. And we are open to having conversations with all members of council about potentially adding additional positions that you feel should be added to that list of department heads that still should be required to live in the city.
Okay, so then those four would be required, then the rest, the remaining department heads would not, based on how this ordinance is drafted?
Correct, and we are open to having a discussion with you about adding additional positions to that four.
Okay, so my question then is, given that it has been the standard since we had a strong mayoral system, to have department heads reside in the city for over more than, you know, over a decade, why this change now?
Sure. So I think a couple of things. Previous administrations, including Mayor Segarra, were very candid about the difficulty of trying to recruit for director-level positions with the residency requirement in place. If you recall, the former director of DPW under Mayor Segarra was in that position for two years as an acting director and an interim director, and he did not reside in the city of Hartford. So this is not a new issue. This is an issue that the city has been grappling with through several administrations, again, that have publicly talked about how challenging it is. You know, we, again, as we seek to fill specific roles, I talked about the CFO, for example, another position that we, you know, have had currently in an acting capacity is the director of MHIS. You know, that is a really great example of a person, currently it's Sharice Snipes, who has been the acting director now for the past two years. Sharice is a woman of color who was born and raised in the north end of Hartford and graduated from Hartford Public Schools. And she has also been our acting director of IT now for the past two years, because for her own personal commitments, she is not able to establish residency in the city of Hartford. And I don't know anyone as passionate and committed, you know, about this community like Sharice. In fact, Sharice was key in our ability to provide free citywide Wi-Fi throughout the city. And again, you know, a lot of the work that Sharice does is driven by her passion and commitment and her experience growing up in Hartford. So, you know, Sharice is someone that, again, also, strong connections to this community, born and raised, you know, for what personal reasons chose to raise outside of Hartford, but is no less committed to this work. And so, for those technical positions, like the budget director, like the IT director position, it's been challenging to recruit during the past couple of years. Again, we are not able to provide the same compensation that you would find in the private sector, and there's also not the same job security. So those two factors alone put us at a disadvantage, and oftentimes are the reasons why Hartford residents that we, that currently reside in the city, who we often approach about coming to the city, are unable, again, to take that kind of risk with regard to a reduced salary or the inability for us to guarantee employment after, you know, mayoral term.
Okay. Another thing, in reference to Bridgeport and New Haven, so New Haven does have a policy where you have to live in the city of New Haven if you're a director, a department head. And in Bridgeport, it's pretty well-known that over 40% of their city employees in Bridgeport are also city residents.
My understanding with New Haven is that I believe that, yes, there was a residency requirement, and it was my understanding that, I don't know if that had been modified at some point, but I would need to follow up on that, and you are correct. Bridgeport on the books does require that their department heads reside in the city. However, it's been reported that that is on paper, and that that has not always been consistently enforced.
Councilman Gill? You're on mute. I unmute you.
Okay, thank you. Quick comment on New Haven, they may have a residency requirement, but our own John Rose, who used to be corporation council here in Hartford, who lives around the corner from me, is now the corporation council for New Haven. So they certainly don't enforce it with respect to their corp counsel. Also, just want to make a comment that, just so that I'm understanding the ordinance, I don't think we're, this ordinance is not waiving the residency requirement for anybody that currently has a residency requirement, it's giving administration the opportunity to waive it, but it comes with a 10% reduction in your salary. So this is not giving administration any kind of carte blanche waiver for anybody. The employee would suffer a penalty for not being in Hartford, if I understand it. Having said all that and having listened to all this conversation, I don't know that we're ready to move on this either, so I would make the motion, as we've done with the first three, to send this back to council with no recommendation.
I second the motion.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Are there any discussions? Councilman Mixtem?
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I wanted to add, as I was listening to COO Montanaz talk about the reasons, I think, and I don't want to be insensitive, especially to those cases where someone is a Hartford person from way back. where someone is, is a Hartford person from way back and for various reasons, I think Ms. Cruzaponte is perhaps her best example. But I think we are also giving short shrift to the value of hiring someone who not only is willing to come here, but is here and wants to be here and, and has already hitched their wagon to the star of the city. I think it matters to have the people who are making these big-time decisions and developing these programs affected directly by them, right? It's their kids and it's their house and it's their city that they care about. Now, there's going to be some occasions where it is someone who cares about it, but there's those unusual things where they have to be out of town. But I think as a city, we are ruled and governed and forced into things enough by people from out of town who care very little for the long-term consequences to our residents. And this is one where I think we should hold the line. I think it matters that you are willing to live here, not just because of the financial incentive, but because this is your place and you want to be here and you're all in for.
Councilman Lebron?
So, Ms. Montanaz, I just want to make a, when I had residents, I would like to make a recommendation or just an awareness. I've had residents reach out to me upset because city officials, and not going into particulars, but go to community meetings, they go to, you know, whatever meetings, faith-based churches and those type of things. And it's disheartening for people in the city when a city employee says something like, "I love the city of Hartford, but I'm not going to send my kids to school here." That is absolutely devastating to our community and that is very troubling. And so that's why I realized that maybe not all of the issues with this may be related to school-aged children and the lottery. However, when you have people public, with, with these positions in public forums, basically being condescending to, you know, our school system and our kids, this very same school system that I send my children to, you know, and I've been committed to, you know, we need to have some sense of fidelity and some sense of, sense of uniformity in terms of our communication out to the community, particularly if you have that, that pulpit or that, that opportunity and it's your job to speak to people.
Yeah.
Or, and you say that, like, that hurts. And so that's why you see there's a lot of community pushback because of this school issue. And folks will say, "I love my city, I love Hartford, I was born and raised, I went to Buckley, I went to Prince Tech, I love this city, but, you know, but I ain't going to send my kids to school here." So, you know, that's just a recommendation and thank you, thank you for.
I appreciate you sharing that feedback and that is something that, you know, we should be much more sensitive to, and we should be supporting our school system and not making disparaging remarks, you know, so I, I appreciate you sharing that.
Councilwoman Bermudez?
I just want to make one clarification. Councilwoman Gail, the new Corporation Counsel for the administration of Mayor Elicker is Patricia King, and she lives in New Haven.
I stand corrected. He was, though, for many years.
He was, he was, for many years. We have a motion on the floor to send this back to council with no recommendation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Anyone oppose? Great, thank you. So we are moving this ordinance back to council with no recommendation, with no other business to discuss. I am calling this meeting to adjourn. I want to thank our administration, our Chief Operations, Operating Officer Thea and Alex Lombardi. And Councilwoman Rosetti, did you have a, a comment?
No, no, just waving.
Okay. With that said, good night, everyone, and thank you all for participating in this meeting. Good night.
Aye.